I mean, I've had this.
Welcome to the May 11th, 2023 in-depth city council meeting. Cindy, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Freilich.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich. Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the God of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item is item 4A is a proposed ordinance and policy regarding disposal of surplus real property.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So I'm going to present this item tonight. As the mayor said, we're going to cover a proposed surplus property ordinance as well as a related policy. The direction that we're seeking tonight is, does the city council have any questions about the proposed ordinance and related policy? And the second question is, does city council support bringing the ordinance and policy forward for formal consideration? The ordinance would be three readings, like any ordinance, and the policy would be approved via resolution. For strategic alignment, this relates to healthy community. There is a strategy in the strategic plan related to developing and implementing a policy guiding the disposal of surplus properties in a manner that supports city goals and priorities. Council did adopt a resolution back in February of '22 regarding sale of property below the market value for a public purpose. This policy and ordinance is much more robust than that initial resolution, and it will codify the process that the city will use. The governing laws that govern cities, how to dispose of their real property. I've listed several codes here, but as you can see, there are several. Among other requirements, we're required to set a public hearing for open bidding and convey the property to the highest bidder via a resolution. Under Iowa law, a city may generally not dispose of real property by a gift, except to a governmental body for a public purpose. There are some exceptions to this, including for purposes of urban renewal, but I'll cover a little bit more of that later. And just to note that disposing of property at less than market value may be considered a gift unless we've put other preconditions on the sale that have been approved by city council. The proposed ordinance and policy, it's going to codify the process that we use for disposal of city-owned real property, the particular disposal methods that are allowed, and how we might determine market value. The policy is just a more detailed articulation of the process and various considerations. The proposed ordinance states that the council may consider fair market value, taxable value, and/or the highest and best use of a property to determine the best option for disposal. The city process will include declaration of the property as surplus, which council does now, and I think is a good practice. You set a public hearing, hold a public hearing, and declare a parcel surplus via resolution. The process may include any one of the following methods, which I'll go into more detail here on a later slide. Competitive bidding, transferring the property to another department, trading the property, or a direct sale. City council is really the ultimate decision-maker on whether or not a property that the city owns is conveyed to someone else and what the total price of that conveyance is in conformity with Iowa law. The disposal methods that are included in the draft code include a sealed bid process, which means that we publicly, it needs to be in writing, publicly invited and opened. We can transfer it to another city department. We may or may not include that in the final ordinance, but that is one of the methods. You can trade it at fair market value. We did this with the Kent McKee property, where they did some cleanup on an adjacent property that was equal to or more than the value of the property that was traded. So that would be a requirement in the code. We can direct sale property to abutting property owners. We also do this now. The difference is that council will in advance determine a unit price for sale of those properties. So so much per lineal foot of property, which you will need to do if you adopt this code. And then also recognizing that we can gift a property to a governmental body. We're doing that with the school district and Bruner Field. It's a gift, which is allowed by Iowa law, or for purposes of urban renewal. So we are also doing that with the Merge Development. They are paying for the property, and they did competitively bid at a previous time to work with that property. But it's being sold for, under the market value for those urban renewal purposes. As far as methods by which we can determine market value, the council may use, and the staff really does this, but you may use one or more of the following methods. You can consult with the county assessor. We do this now routinely. You can utilize an independent appraiser. We can reference values of adjacent properties, or we can request bids on a property. City council may make the final determination on the conveyance, as I mentioned earlier. So the next steps are, depending on the questions and direction you give us tonight, we will bring forward the draft ordinance and a resolution to adopt the policy for formal consideration. A red line of the ordinance, it's a completely new section, so it's all new language, is in your packet as well as a draft of the policy. So back to the questions. Do you have any questions on the materials presented, and are you comfortable with bringing it forward?
Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, just a quick question on the direct sale of the abutting property, and I know we do that now, and I like having a set price. My question is, is that price in the ordinance that we have to, if we need to adjust in two or three years?
I think we could adopt it via resolution.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that those occasional adjustments can happen every few years.
Our attorney's on the line, but I would think we could do it by resolution, and we could update it annually or something if we wanted, yeah.
No, I think it's a great idea, and it's time to catch up and standardize this process, so.
Any other questions? Councilmember Osborne.
I'm pretty much in support of it. I just want to kind of do a little bit of a reality check and just confirm. It looks to me like this is just codifying pretty much what our practices have been.
There are a couple of small differences. One is establishing the unit price for a direct sale. And also, we have worked directly with nonprofits. Jody is good. She's at the podium. But we are tightening that up, and while we may limit it to nonprofits for bid, we will still need to competitively bid it. Actually, I think that's a good thing. We'll get a little competition and maybe work with more nonprofits than we have typically in the past, yeah.
Okay, and I just have one other comment. Man, I don't think it really applies to this, but it says in there about, you know, the properties that are deemed unbuildable, you know, and that are adjacent to property owners. Which all makes sense. But we have also talked about, you know, potentially grandfathering in. If a house had been built there before, you know, we could potentially build on the current footprint. All that's very preliminary conversations. That would not be addressed in this. We would look to the other part of code that established what is a buildable lot and then apply that to this code. Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, I think so. Is there, either Andrew, where's Andrew? Andrew or Jody, I don't know if there's anything that we would, any criteria we would use to make that determination that is not currently in code.
The way I'm thinking of it is, we've currently got code that talks about setbacks and all these other things.
Yes.
And that would be the code that we want to address that question in, you know, if we want to grandfather in. Properties that have had houses on them, but they're not currently buildable at this point.
Yeah, Andrew, I think, or Jody, someone.
We're, Mayor, Council, we're in concurrence, that we would go through that process before we determined it. If somebody was interested in it, you know, it could go through the variance process and that kind of thing to see. And then if it didn't work out, then we would have that kind of documentation saying it's not buildable for X, Y, and Z reasons.
Right, right, okay.
Councilmember Lewis.
I just have a comment. I just want to thank Council, or I was going to say Councilwoman Webb, that's our city legislator, Webb.
I got promoted.
There you go, sorry. For actually taking this and putting it in a policy. I think that's going to make it easier going forward to know exactly what the steps are, instead of it being verbally saying, well, this is what we do, and that way it's in writing. And it's, that way when we are no longer sitting here 10 years from now, the council that's sitting up here won't have questions. So for that, I thank her. That's it.
Thank you.
Is there a consensus with city council to support bringing the ordinance and policy forward for formal consideration?
Some moved to it.
Okay, there you go.
Just a quick note, there may be some additional legal review and some, a few small tweaks. If I make any kind of substantive change, I will point it out to council, but just know that there may be slight changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next is 4B is an update on housing-related activities.
There's this thing under here. I'm going to trip over now that I realized it's there. The cords are covered. Anyways, Mayor, Council, Jody Roy, I'm Community Development Director for the city. We're just going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing for the last few years related to housing. And we're going to start with the, an update on the recent housing activity. And by recent, it's not so recent, it's really like the last two, three years. But, and then an overview of what we have planned, what we know is upcoming. I'm not conjecturing about new things. We're just talking about what we know is going to happen. And then receive your feedback on any of those topics. So we're going to ask, does city council have any questions, thoughts, feedback on how things are going, or what we should be doing, or how we should be doing it? So the housing activity we've been undertaking really does align with the city's strategic plan. And there are three components of the plan that we believe it falls under vibrant community, healthy community, and safe community. It's specifically listed in the healthy community, but I think without a healthy housing market, all of those other things kind of struggle to stay safe and vibrant. And so we'll start with the beginning. The housing plan was adopted in April of 2021, shortly after you all adopted the strategic plan. And that was developed in collaboration with a number of local entities. So nonprofits, the city, the county, some business leaders, and the chamber. And so the, the plan creates a housing council, which is, has representatives of those same entities. And I sit on that on behalf of the city council, so if you don't like that, you can tell me. And then it established citywide goals, and in September of 2021, the city council adopted strategies that were out of the housing plan to do that work. So the goals that are outlined in the housing plan are countywide housing goals. And so the anticipation was really like that the city as half of the population of Muscatine County would account for at least half of the goals in each section. So increase housing units by 300, upgrade 900 housing units of the affordable housing, says of affordable housing stock. But in this case, so sometimes I'm here and we're talking about affordable, we talk about income limits. In this case, we're talking about housing that's affordable to the people who live in it, not necessarily about the HUD definition of affordable. Improve rental inspection outcomes by 5%. Increase the ratio of those who live and work in, in the county, rather than drive into the county to work. And then reduce the number of children who are moving in any given year by 50%. That's a really lofty goal, I just want to say. And decrease the number of housing burden residents by 9%. So we'll start, we're going to focus a lot on the city activities. So we have code and permitting activities. In the past three years, in 2020, almost exactly three years ago, actually, we adopted the Revised Rental Housing Code, and then in 2022, you all approved the Property Maintenance Code. And so the Property Maintenance Code actually has had really stellar outcomes in that time. And since September, we have actually sent 27 notices of violations of the Property Maintenance Code, with 25 of those being to residential units. And again, Property Maintenance Code targets properties that are commercial or residential, but not, but are vacant or vacant, not abandoned at that point typically. And then permitting, I just wanted you to see over those, over that same time period, so in FY '21 and FY '22 and year-to-date FY '23, what we've been doing with permitting for residential buildings. And it's done by buildings because that's how the permitting works. You come in and you get a permit to work on this property. It doesn't say you're building 50 units or you're building three units. It's a building. And so in these numbers, like in 43, the 43 in FY '21, it has the Colorado law's Grand View, Colorado Apartments, Grand View Apartments, and I believe Hershey Apartments actually as well. And so, and then I've totaled, just based on what we know was built, that's what the 176 comes from. It comes from those three multifamilies, plus Steamboat Village, which was actually in the 26 units in FY '22. And then the residential building rehabs are mostly single-family, and that's a range. It could be a pretty small rehab. We didn't include roofs, but you know, you could be doing something simple, or you could be doing a gut rehab of your home. So, and other things we do is funding and resources, looking at those. So in 2020, council actually also started, approved bonding for the demolition of unsafe properties. We also have, as part of the sewer separation project, a house had to be purchased and either demolished or relocated to relocate, to put the sewer line through. And we elected to actually move that property, and so now we're going to be talking under the new rules about how to dispose of that property. And then we, as Carol mentioned before, we've partnered with other nonprofits on development, specifically the Community Foundation and Habitat for Humanity for new homeownership opportunities. And then you also approved TIF for Forehousing Developments, which was also in 2021, I believe. And that was again Colorado, Grand View, Steamboat, and Hershey. And the pictures, I think, are very illustrative of what happens when you demolish a building. So what we're demolishing, the types of buildings we're demolishing, as well as the process and what the site looks like once the building is gone. And I think, when I was looking at the pictures to do the presentation today, I just, I've not been to a demolition site when it's in process. So it startled me how big the pile is, right? Like, I know how much stuff is in a house, but it startled me to think all of that stuff is going to the landfill. So yet another good reason why we've got the Property Maintenance Code, and our goal is to not get to a point where they have to be demolished. So I just thought that was rather startling. And so other city activities, we have, obviously, we have programs in addition to those other things that we do. So one of the things that we've, we designed last fall and then implemented this spring was the Grand View Neighborhood Facade Program, which is targeted, is aimed at helping neighbors make small improvements to their homes, relatively small improvements to their homes, but get together and then have some visual impact with the work that they're doing. It hasn't been as successful as we had hoped, but we continue to work with, with nonprofit organizations to try and get, get the people they're already working with into that program. But I think we'll be having a conversation about what that looks like and how we adjust. And then the Downtown Revitalization Program, which is the facade program the city set aside, the $50,000 annually, $100,000 annually, sorry, also starting in 2020 to do facade improvements to the Second Street Corridor. And this is the money, we just, the program was put on hold because of the pandemic. And so we've used that money to leverage, quite honestly, almost a million dollars to get a whole 11 buildings restored by the end of this year. Well, started by the end of this year, probably completed next year. But, and I included in this housing activity because the one thing it will do is improve the upstairs facades as well. So it's not like we're just touching the commercial storefront, and some of them will actually get windows in those apartments and other improvements that'll truly benefit those units. The Upper Story Conversion, council supported, submitting an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority to convert underutilized commercial space to two units of market-rate apartments above the Chambers Building. So, and those actually will be completed later this year. And then we have the, some of the more normal programs, the ongoing programs that we have in the city, obviously the housing counseling services, but we've really kind of beefed those up this year. We really think those are valuable. To date, we've done, we've offered the Housing Counseling Rental Class to more than 400 families. And then we've also, and in this calendar year, we've already had five homeownership, first-time homebuyer classes. And we, in the fiscal year, we've helped 11 families with their first home purchase. And then the Muscatine, the Housing Voucher Program. I mention this because for the first time in decades, we actually have received new vouchers, which is actually budget authority. So we've talked about it a little bit before, that we have a budget authority and we have a voucher allowance. Our voucher allowance previously was 376. We only got four new ones, but you know, we'll take what we can get. And, but that really means that we have budget authority to rent to those families, more so than get to 380. So, and right now, we're just over 340, which is up about 20 from this, from six months ago. And then the other thing is, we have managed to increase, and I believe stabilize, the Public Housing Authority occupancy rate. Clark House is currently 100% occupied again, finally. The Sunset Park is actually currently about 94% occupied. We had two move-outs this year or this month. However, that's been units getting full, units, people moving out, so that continued kind of movement. And then the other thing is, while we still manage Hershey Manor, even though it's not a citizen's property, it is also 100% occupied at this point. And that's worth a party all on its own. And the HVAC project is about two-thirds complete. So the Housing Council and our community partners. So we have started in 2021, yeah, 2021, with the first Housing Summit. No, 20, yeah, 2021, sorry, my years are blending. With the first Housing Summit, that's kind of become an annual event. We'll have our third one in September of this year. And each year, Debbie Durham comes, and the Housing Summit is, has really been a bonus for our community, because it does provide information to our community, but as you all are aware, more importantly, introduced Debbie to what we're doing and how collaborative we are, so that we were able to get the CDBG grant for the Mulberry Neighborhood Revitalization Program. The Homes for Iowa Home is the prison industries-built home that we partnered with the Community Foundation to enable them to have a house to place, which was then sold to a first-time homebuyer. And then Habitat for Humanity also used a city-owned lot to build their last build. And Rebuilding Together continues to do their smaller projects throughout the year, as well as have their Rebuilding Together Day kind of blitz projects. And then the final thing that as, in partnership with the county and the Housing Council has kind of helped frame what that looks like, is the housing study, which is currently out. The RFP's responses are due tomorrow. I already have one in my possession, so we're going gangbusters. And then, so in the Housing Council and community partners again, so MCSA has been hugely active in the housing realm and the rehab, especially in the Mulberry Neighborhood. So these pictures, as you can tell, they're the same houses. MCSA owns the house on the left and is remodeling that. It is now ready for occupancy. I actually had not realized since the last time I was out there that anything had happened with the privately-owned house on the right. So I went out to take a picture to show what it turned into and realized that the adjacent homeowner actually recited their house as well. So it is already having the intended consequence of feeding additional private investment. So that was very nice, which also is good for the Mulberry Neighborhood Revitalization, which has 30 facade programs and more substantial facade improvements for the neighborhood. And we will be starting on those this summer. We have to go through the environmental review process before we can get to that point. And then, so what's next is, the very next thing actually is the 3D printing should be starting in town. The first house should start being printed next week. And so the Community Foundation, as many of you know, is going to print 10 throughout the county, with four of them being in Arbor Commons, and then they'll do a couple in, two or three in West Liberty, and then potentially back in Muscatine. MCSA is actually, has a grant using the Community Grant Rider that we, so we all partnered on this, but due to the development, the requirement for some development expertise, MCSA had to be the grantee. And so they were able to secure a grant for, to print six homes in the target neighborhood that will target either teachers or families already living in the neighborhood with improved housing opportunities. And so the reason, so these pictures are all houses that are in the Mulberry Neighborhood. Some of them may get a facelift, some of them may become the pile of sticks we saw a little while ago. But to truly improve the opportunities for everybody else, if they are, become that pile of sticks, the likelihood is it will be a 3D print site. So, and we'll, again, offer those properties to residents in the neighborhood or teachers at the school. And so then Supportive Housing Project, MCSA has received another grant for the 21-unit Supportive Housing Program, which will serve individuals who are chronically homeless, which means they have a disabling condition and a substance abuse condition typically. And so, but it'll provide them the supervision and supports to recover from that and move on. That will actually be adjacent to the Brown House that was in the last picture. But I, so it'll have 24-hour supervision, and it should, it will, it will meet a huge need to keep people recovering that are currently kind of floundering within the system. And then the revolving loan fund is a piece of the housing plan that has been there from the beginning, but we've been kind of struggling. There's, like, Community Foundation has allocated money to it, and the county has money that was previously allocated to it, but then there was a change in interpretations of eligible uses of some money, so we're kind of working through those right now and how to keep it. Because the thing we know, right, is there's always a need for more stuff to be done in the community and to grow that, that process. There's a gap oftentimes in the housing, so that will fund that gap component. And it will be housed with Community Foundation. And so what's next for the city? We'll obviously complete the housing analysis. Geez. I didn't move that much.
I did not do that.
So, I think that's telling me it's time to be done. So, and the First Time Home Buyer Assistance Grant, we actually are submitting a grant next week for home, to the home program to provide additional homeowner assistance, more substantial homeowner assistance to help buy down the cost of purchasing a home for, and these would be for families about 80% of AMI. You all have approved the Lead Hazard Reduction in Healthy Homes Grant, I forgot a Y. That, that will be about $3 million to do 75 houses to do lead remediation for families that have children under the age of six in them frequently. And then the new thing on here, it's not new really, but it'll be the newest development, is the Pilot Owner Occupied Maintenance Program that we need to go to partner with the regular property maintenance. And so we're kind of looking at how do you target that so that it makes an impact, the biggest impact. And so do we target in the focused neighborhoods? Do we focus on the main thoroughfares where there's houses, and we all drive by them, right, and can see them? And how, what do we offer, and what's the kind of in-kind to keep the buy-in so that it stays up? So we'll be working on that, and that, if you have any thoughts or comments, I would definitely welcome those. And then proceeding with And then proceeding with the merge development as, as those steps become necessary. And finally, we're back to direction sought. It's not really direction, but I will definitely take any input, comments, criticisms, whatever you want to give me.
Councilmember Gordon.
I've got three questions, but I'll do one and then I'll step aside, let somebody else in, so. No, no, no. So Jody, can you go all the way back to one of your first slides that was your metrics? It had a bunch of like nine boxes with goals.
Oh, well, I will try.
176 units or?
Yeah, I just want to know, my question is, these are the goals. I had, I think it's the fourth slide.
There it is.
Okay. Not that one, the one before. So, I mean, this is great to have, these are our goals, but when we get this slide the next time, can you please show where we're at, upward arrow, downward arrow, what the numbers are, because I think that would be, you know, important to see.
And I, so, and I can answer some of, some of those, some of those we don't actually have really good data yet on. The, we actually, through the county, we actually have met number one. We have provided more than 300 units of affordable housing between all of the affordable complexes that have been built. We haven't, we've done a few of the 900 units, but nowhere near 900 units, probably nowhere near 100 units. That would be what the, the pilot program will primarily do. And then rental inspections, outcomes, that one isn't really measurable because of the pandemic and the stop to the program and then the change in the rules. And so we'll have, we'll start measuring that as we go forward.
We are tracking though, we have been tracking re-inspections.
Yes, the number.
Yes, if they get inspected and they pass on the first try, that's a better outcome than if they have to do two or three or four inspections. So that data is, is available and we will be putting that on the website when we get the performance dashboard up there, yes.
Yeah, we don't need to know, especially in that case, year over year because of the pandemic, but it'd be nice to see where we're at, because I know you're working very hard at it.
Yeah, so, and one of the things is, we actually, so we, the inspectors and I were at, at the nuisance conference yesterday and we started to have a conversation about how do you incentivize that compliance piece, like, at least try to have it ready to pass an inspection so that you're getting, you know, maybe five things on your rental inspection when it comes back compared to three pages of things on your rental inspection. So we don't have a good answer to that, but we are definitely open to suggestions on that as well. So, so anyways, the, the schools, this one with the 50% of the schools is probably the hardest one to measure, but, and, well, these last two really, because you have to have some baseline data and the way the census is, the infrequency of the census doesn't really facilitate that a whole lot, so we'll be working on that.
Thank you. I mean, even just up and down type, just so you can, we can know your direction that you feel is happening. So thank you, Jeff.
Councilmember Osborne.
Just building on Peggy's thing, especially in one area, I'm very happy to see that we made the 300 new unit goal. Was that a two-year period? I think this was adopted in 2021.
Yeah, that was actually a little before that, but they didn't come online till after the plan was adopted, so, and, so, no, it was about a four-year period.
Four-year period, so it was less than 100 a year.
Yeah, they just came in spurts, right? So like we had 100 and, in the county, we had almost 200 come online, just between last September, last October and February.
Okay. And you're asking for, for input thoughts, right? So I just have a thought, I'll temper what I'm gonna say with, we haven't seen the housing study yet, so I would align to whatever the housing, housing study says we need. However, if it's similar to the last housing study, which I don't anticipate it's gonna be, show us too much of a different picture, it might give us better detail on the mix, you know? But, but as far as the raw numbers go, my anticipation is, is I'll be looking for a goal of 200 to 300 a year. How does that make you feel? Does that look like?
Honestly, while I love the idea that, that, that people value getting it done without substantial resources, it is pretty unrealistic. So, so I'll put that in perspective is that the three units, three properties that came online this year, I have actually been at state events where they have said that we oddly had a county get three proj, four projects, we had four projects, four projects come online, that will never happen again. To get funded all in the same year, which quite honestly, Andrew and I were like, what? So, but it did happen, but I don't think that will ever happen again. And the way the state looks at their money, it will be hard to probably get even three, three years in a row.
Well, I do anticipate that it would take more resources to do that, so that'd be my next question is what kind of resources would it take? And you don't need to answer that today.
I'll, I'll give you a ballpark. So when those projects were funded, they were seven to eight million dollars for 50 units. So, so not a small chunk of change.
And Jeff, are you talking about three, two to three hundred units of low to moderate income or are you talking about market rate housing or just a combination?
Well, I think at this point in time, if you look at the current housing study, again, I'll temper what I'm saying because we haven't seen the new one yet. I think we meet, met the, the current housing studies' goals as far as affordable housing goes. I think we need to focus on market rate housing. And, and, and how I get my 200 to 300 number is I was going through some data today around growth and manufacturing jobs in the area of mostly the county of Muscatine. At two to three percent a year, that comes out to two to 300 a, a year houses. And so, you know, that's the opportunity that we have. If we can meet that opportunity, then we could probably fill those houses based on the way our current job growth is going right now.
I think we have the housing study and that will roll into the comprehensive plan update. I think it's an interesting number to maybe sort of test against.
Yep.
Right? And we can keep that in mind, I think, as we do, do some of this work, I, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good stake.
Preliminary thoughts, you know, I'm, again, I keep saying, I'll temper what I'm saying with until, you know, we see the housing study and all that comes out, but I, based on job growth, that's the number we need to hit.
I, I think the demand is that high. I, so like I said, I really appreciate that there's a recognition that there's that level of need and it is on all levels, right? Like if we start to talk about that work, everything up to 120% really, to get that workforce target group as well, it, it is going to be high, especially if we hope to grow.
Any other questions? Yes.
Okay, this is moving off of what I was gonna ask Brian, since it was on your slide, a street property update. And this is up by the sewer separation. And we approved monies last year for the renovation. So what's the update? Because I'd like to get it back on the tax bill.
So the, you okay with me talking?
Yep.
Okay. So it was, it was the foundation and, and the upgrades of the mechanical systems that had to be replaced when they moved the building, so the upstairs still needs its own renovation. That's kind of, we were at this point with getting to the new policy so that we could, would know how we, how to proceed, really, because before it was not, before it was, we could find a partner and work with them to do it. And I, so here's what I would say, so it's ready to go, we're ready to proceed in that way. Tell me how you want to proceed. That, that's kind of where we're at right now. Like, we're never going to get the money out of it that went into it. And so what is the primary goal?
Well, so the funding that we approved last year was only for the foundation and the HVAC and the mechanicals and not the total remodel. Because I, I'm sorry, my memory has hit me that I thought it was everything.
It was everything that the, the guys were working on to move the house. It was all of the stuff that had to be done to move the house, but it did not update the upstairs of the house. So it was a nice new found, it's a beautiful foundation and basement, I could live there. But, and so that's kind of where we're at. So we could, so if, do we want to go into that conversation?
Does council want to talk about it briefly or do you want to come back and talk about it? Because the, I think what we'll actually need is some direction from council. I mean, there, there are various options here that we could, we could follow, so I think we need more.
Maybe bring it back in June in depth?
Oh yeah, for sure, we can do that.
Why don't we do that? Give you some time, but it's out there because again, it's been a year and we need to get it moving. So, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I think she hasn't.
Oh, you have another question?
Yeah, I'll just, I think the numbers on the housing, I'm a little confused by the building numbers, is it, because I thought we had closer to 100 housing units, 150 between Grandview, Colorado and Steamboat. And the numbers there didn't reflect that.
So they?
Yeah, though, I think it was the next slide or two, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the 176 units or the 43 and the 26?
Well, your 176 is a total of two and a half years, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this thing, this, it does include those three, what it says, it doesn't include Hershey, Hershey came online before that. It includes Colorado, Grandview and the other, they're just such a large portion of it. You don't have many other units that came, new units, new units that came online during that period.
So Colorado was about 50 units?
Andrew, do you want to come up here?
I'm sorry, Andrew.
I see you raising your hand.
Because that's why I'm getting a little confused because I'm, I'm not seeing the
So in my recollection, Color?
Actually, they're probably not, because I didn't think about them in this current year, sorry.
Colorado and Grandview are 52 each, Steamboat was 43.
And they were early 2023, late 2022.
They, they all got the certificate of occupancies in late fall this year, or last year.
I didn't do the math on, on the, for the current year. I had the math done for 21 and 22, waiting for the numbers for 23.
Because I think that's where our 300 came from, it's like we've made great progress.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
Councilmember Osborne.
What's our, what's our fill rate on the, on the new housing? I know we've lost some in existing homes, you know, but we're still at about 90% filled there. What are we, how are we doing on our new housing?
Occupancy rate on the new residential? So the, I don't, Colorado is 100% filled. Steamboat is pretty close, I believe. Grandview has been a little slower just because they had some management issues that they had to work through before they even started again. But they, if you drive by, you start to see more cars out there now, so it's, it's starting to progress.
Oh.
Which is good.
Any other questions?
If, if I may, can I offer a comment?
Of course.
So I just want to recognize that quite a bit of this work that's been accomplished has been through some of the policies you all have adopted recently. The property maintenance code, some of the work, even the team, you've worked on nuisance, cleaning up the nuisance ordinance, the new legal council that we have who has expertise in this area and has helped us pursue some of these things. And so I just wanted to recognize that this is policy in action that's happening.
All right. Thank you, Jody. And next is item C, update on city construction projects.
Hey, you're short. Good afternoon, good evening, I guess it's evening, good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Stein, Public Works Director, for those of you who don't know me. I'm just gonna briefly give an overview of where we are with our construction projects this year and what we have coming up in the future. If you have any questions along the way, just shout them out, let me, let me know, stop me. So just tonight, this is just for information purposes, so I'm gonna go over the current projects. I'll give a brief overview of, like I said, what's coming up and then I ask, or take any questions, questions that you may have. So our current, excuse me, current projects we have are Park Avenue four to three lane conversion, that is in what we call the closeout phase, it's mostly paperwork. There should be no more work being done, although I did notice a water valve box that has broken that need to be repaired under warranty, so that might take a lane closure. And I, I have been told that there is a sewer line, a private sewer line that needs to cross the street to get reconnected, so that will tear up our new street and that might be an issue coming up. We can't help that, but the, the street work is done. Our second street, street skate project is substantially complete. There's a couple punch lists items left to do, we're gonna walk through that and get that closed out, so we'll probably bring that back in our June meeting for council to approve the completion of that project. Grandview Avenue reconstruction is almost done, they have about 20 working days left. They're, they're finishing up sidewalk and they'll have to come back in and do the, the grading and the seating and just whatever's left over as far as punch lists and things. So that, that one's gonna wrap up here shortly. West Hill Sewer Separation Phase Five is in the final phase. They will be working on the Fletcher Avenue intersection at Lucas here soon. Then there's sewers to go down Climber Street and then right now they're working on backfilling, seeding, putting back in the courtesy walks. So there's some smaller things like that and they're still laying pipe, so that is going along. This year, we're not doing, well, concrete full debt patching, we took the funds for that to do Fulham Avenue reconstruction, which we've talked about. That project will actually start on June 5th. There will be a public meeting for that on May 25th, Thursday, May 25th, at the school parking lot at Kindler and Fulham. And the letters, letters will be going out to the residents for that on Monday and you all will be invited as well, council. So that will be starting June 5th and it is supposed to be done before school starts and the contractor told me if he can't get done before school starts, he shouldn't be in business. So I'm assuming that we will have that done relatively quickly. As far as other full debt patching, we will be, we have measured and we will be preparing an estimate for Iowa Avenue repair between Third and Fourth Streets. We are gonna wait until after July for that. There's a grand opening coming up in June and then we have a parade and we won't have it done before that, so we'll have to wait till after July to, to repair that section of Iowa Avenue. Depending on what the costs come back in for that, we may be able to extend that down to Third to Second Street, because that one is, is in similar condition. We'll have to wait and see how that goes. And then as far as asphalt alleys and street overlays, due to the reassignment of funds to Fulham, we will not be doing any of those this year. Potentially next year, we'll see how our bids come in for Fulham. We may be able, if we have Iowa done, we'll have a little bit of money potentially to do something like that, so we'll look at maybe doing that next year to try to catch up on some of those asphalt streets and/or alleys. So that's what's going on now, I guess. Were there any questions about what we're doing right now? Oh, boy, okay.
Councilmember Osborne.
Phase five being done in June, does that include the punch list or is that when the punch list starts?
The substantial completion is supposed to be done in June by the change order that council signed. I, that'll be debatable whether they get there. I, I'm gonna be surprised, that's the date that they're held to. That would not include punch list, no, punch list can be done after that.
I didn't think so. That's the way I remembered it too when we approved the change order. How's our contractor doing? Is he more optimistic now or?
It seems to be going pretty well now. I don't want, we, we have some closed session discussions, so I don't want to talk too much about it, but he's doing what he's supposed to be doing, so.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Um, Brian, who's supposed to be taking care of the lot where the house is at 891?
Yeah, it's a gray area. We will get that resolved, though. The grass is growing pretty, pretty tall right now, which is actually kind of good. So the rye is going to seed, which, which we will knock that down and then we'll have more grass that comes up after that, but it does need to be addressed. That'll be, yeah, I, I've gotten a couple complaint calls about that, we will take care of that here soon.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brian?
I have a question regarding the wayfinding. When's that all gonna be happening? Is that in the next?
You know what, I think I left that off, but I can talk about it right now if you'd like to. So that, they are working on that report. I do not have an updated, an update from them, but their contract, they were supposed to have us a report by August, so to my knowledge, they're still working towards that goal.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I don't have a better update than that. Sorry, I don't have a better update than that.
Any other questions?
I had a couple of public input. One was the, we lost some trees on Second, or just off of Second Street at the corner of, I think, Sycamore. It looks like there was some sidewalk rework done there, Sycamore and Second. And then we lost the trees in that, all the landscaping in that.
Yeah, that, so the, the rework there was warranty work. There were cracks in the sidewalk, so that, that was done at no expense to the city. The tree that was, that tree was gone, I believe, before we started that project, so. And that was not within the scope of the project. That tree pit there, it was outside of the scope of the project. So we'll have to have an internal discussion to see what we're going to do with that tree pit there.
Kind of on the radar, at least.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, the only other thing I had from public input was the owner of the business at the corner of Green and, and Lucas, Mike Siltotap. He said that a lot of the trucks, during various phases last summer, a lot of the trucks, heavy trucks were running through his lot and everything. And, and he was, he was wondering if he could get some gravel or some leveling done.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that, and we will be working with him on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, so that's what's happening now. Sorry, Rich, not just yet. Up, upcoming projects. I'll run through these quickly. So West Hill Sewer Separation Phase Six A and B has been bid. We do have a low bidder that, that, the bids have to go to the state of Iowa because we're borrowing SRF funds to be reviewed and approved. So we hope to bring that back to approve a contract and bond at the June 1st meeting. And then we would, or I'm sorry, award the contract June 1st, approve contract and bond at the June 15th meeting, and then they can start after that with approval from the state. So that is moving forward, hoping to begin end of June, early July, and then it is designed to be done by December of next year, 2024. The redundant force main from Musser Park to the Water Pollution Control Plant is in design. That project will hopefully go to construction in 2024. We are required to have that completed by 2026. So if we build it in '24, we'll have time to make any corrections if we need to, or any, if we have any unknowns that come up, we'll have time to deal with those. So that is at about 90% design. We are working with the railroad because we have to cross underneath the railroad tracks at Oregon, and that gets to be a bit technical, and it takes a lot of review, so that is in process right now. The Riverfront Amphitheater is in design. It's also in fundraising, I have been told. We have, some of you, I think, have met with the cost analysis consultant, so they're working on that to have us a report, so that is all moving forward. And should be coming around soon for final review and approval, and then we start taking bids. So hopefully we'll have that done here by fall. I, that's my goal, anyway. As I mentioned, Fulham Avenue Phase One will begin June 5th. And then next year, we'll do Phase Two and Phase Three, and we'll see where the roundabout comes in, the mini roundabout potentially at Hauser and Fulham, if that gets funded. I have not heard on that. That grant has been submitted, but we don't, it has nothing, we haven't heard nothing yet from that. As I mentioned, we'll have to see what happens with asphalt alleys and the streets, depending on funding availability. Carver Corner Roundabout is in design. I actually have a meeting with our consultant tomorrow to discuss that and then look at some preliminary views to see if that's what, if they're on the right track. So that is moving forward. Our Isit Avenue corridor reconstruction project that we received the Raze Plan, Planning Grant for is still with Federal Highway. I did have a meeting with them two weeks ago, and they are frustrated, the local federal highway are frustrated as I am because of the way it takes. And so they're taking a lot of feedback and, and input from the awardees of how this is going. So they've gotten my feedback, and they're hoping they can make some improvements, but we, we are still in that two to 18 month waiting period, review period from them. So we're at their mercy. We'll move forward as soon as we can. The next step for that would be to send out an RFQ, request for qualifications or for engineering firms to do the, the design. I was hoping to have that done a long time ago, but we'll, we'll move with that, move forward with that. Our Dick Drake Way Railroad Overpass Project is still out there. The grant application has been submitted. The preliminary engineering for that has been completed. We, that's one of those other ones that's out there waiting for award. We haven't heard anything yet. We, Carol and I did meet with the railroad a while back during the flood. They haven't heard anything new. Once they hear, they will let us know and vice versa. So we're still waiting for answers on that one. And then Brian's pipe dream is to complete Second Street Street Scape down Walnut, Cedar, Sycamore, Iowa, Chestnut, and Pine to connect Mississippi Drive to Second Street Streets with the similar items. So as we pursue funding and look for funding for that, those, those will be on the radar. They're on my radar for sure, so that's where I'd like to get at some point.
I'll just mention too, we did hire a new engineer.
Well, you just keep stealing my thunder.
I'm sorry, Brian. You go ahead. You tell the rest.
First, the governor, now it's this.
I didn't hear anything. What happened?
We do, we did hire a new city engineer. He will start on Monday. His name is Kevin Kuhn. Very excited for him to join. He's very excited to join us. So when he gets here and we get him oriented, we will bring him around as part of that to, to meet all of you, and then I'll have him at a council meeting or two, and, and you'll see him around. And yeah, it's, we're, we're very excited for that. That's going to take a lot of burden off of me and some of the other staff, and, and hopefully not put too much on him, but I think he's prepared and ready to go for that, so.
Does he live here? Does he live here?
He lives in Iowa City right now. His wife is getting her PhD from the University of Iowa, so they are there, and then he plans to relocate here as soon as he's available to, so, yep. With that, I will take any questions.
Councilmember Osborne.
Carver Corner Design, do we know yet if it's going to be feasible to leave the White Way Hotel?
It appears that it will be preliminarily, and that was the first draft that I saw. That was a few weeks ago. So what I, I will know more tomorrow when I see the preliminary plans.
Excited to see that. And where does the soccer bubble fit into this? Because folks are starting to call it. We need to come up with a better name, by the way.
That fits into Parks and Rec, not Public Works, so I can defer that one to somebody else.
I got you.
Councilmember Osborne, is there any updates of what, are they going to be doing any updates with that building you're talking about, the hotel?
With the White Way?
Yeah.
There are folks interested in it. I can't really say much more than that.
Very good.
I think they've been approaching the current owner.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Who's next? You are?
He looks like he's ready to get out.
He's poised.
He's going to run to the podium.
Oh, okay. Hold on. I'm going to help Nancy here quick because she's going to owe me one if she does.
Before, before Nancy, you pull, pull the presentation up, but Rich is going to just give a real quick update on the south end improvement projects.
I know. Blame me, but.
Thanks, Brian. People are short standing up here, aren't they? Mayor Council, thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon, for requesting a presentation on the projects. I always appreciate that. We can talk about Parks and Rec all night long if you guys want to stay. I'm more than welcome, okay? Okay, so south end community improvement projects, there are 10 components of those projects. The first one was the Hawk Street Crossing in Oregon and Earl. That is being constructed right now. MP&amp;W has finished their portion of the installation of the arms. And so the concrete work has been sold. Will be done here in the next two weeks. We should have completion there. The Taylor Park Site Plan was number two, and that included the utilities for Taylor Park, the parking lot and the pickleball courts. We are experiencing some finishing detail issues with the pickleball courts, but we're working through those. We should have resolve here soon. People are enjoying the courts and are able to use those now, though, along with the parking lot. The playgrounds, if you've noticed, Musser Park, Taylor Park, Sunset Park have the playgrounds installed. They are now installing the port in place rubber under the playgrounds. Next week at this time, we should have completion on those playgrounds, and they should be open for usage. The Musser Trail Link is one of the first things completed, and that's in Musser Park, going from the trailhead out to Oregon. That is complete. Taylor Park Restrooms, we are having issues with the vendor in discussions about their backlog. They're nine months behind. Supply-demand issues is what they're telling us. So we're pushing them as much as we can. We hope to have resolve here shortly. If not, cancel the contract and start over, is where we may end up ending with that one. Park Shelters, Taylor Park, Kentstein Park, and Musser Park are complete. All that's left is the Kentstein Park electrical to that shelter, and that one, those will be done. Splash Pad, we expect to commission it, as in have the contractor come in, put water in it, run all the elements on the 17th. I hope to have that open shortly after for the citizens to use. Still a little dirt work and a little seed and things to do yet. Kentstein Park Sunset Housing Connector, the trail, the concrete portion of that is done. The asphalt portion with the bridge is yet to be done, and that's connecting Sunset Park, past soccer, over the causeway to Kentstein. Very simple little project. Then the ninth component was the miscellaneous park features. That included the drinking fountains, the kiosks, the benches, the shade structures, and those things. We'll use the contingency fund when we're comfortable with the rest of the projects being substantially completed, so we see what we have left, so we're not over budget for that. And then the last one was the Taylor Park lighting electrical component, and that was done, and that's in Taylor Park and completed and being used as we talk. Right now, with all the projects in motion, all the contracts let, we're about 5.6% left with the contingency, which is right where we want it to be, so we're right on target. The restroom is probably the part of the projects that makes me the most nervous, but we do have a porta potty down there now in the, in an interim just to get us by. Future projects coming up, soccer irrigation, we're working on the plans and specifications. We should be coming to council soon to let that out for bid. The Events Dome, as you asked about, we're currently working through professional services. We've met with a couple of dome companies to see what we can learn in investigation in order to write the plans and specs. I hope for the plan, the professional services to go out here in the next week and then have them back. I hope to have it to council approving plans and specs sometimes in July or thereabouts, is when you'll see the real picture and what we're looking at, okay? The next one would be the Wheat Park Lagoon Project, working on professional services to redo and dredge and all the stuff in that area. A miracle field for not necessarily Kentstein Park, but a miracle field for our handicap accessible, small, small, smaller playground in scope. We're working on. Chapel restoration in the cemetery we're working on, and the security cameras we are working on. And yes, we will replace that tree on Second and Sycamore. That is in our agenda. We are just starting to take over the maintenance of some of those areas, so we'll do that. That's it for projects. Questions, anybody?
Just, just a comment. I was stalking Taylor Park the other night, as I do on occasion, and I counted at least 12 people playing pickleball. It was a beautiful night. They were having a riot. I didn't go in and, you know, say, hey, how's it going? But there was a great crowd there.
Great.
Well done.
Perfect. Perfect. So you had mentioned, Councilmember Gordon, a while back about a grand opening or that type of thing. The donated, the donators to this project, whether we're not interested in when we first started with a grand opening, but we might suggest and might look at something on the National Night Out event that's being planned in that area to maybe do something there just to recognize everybody who was involved in putting the project together and everything. But we'll talk more about that. I know you were asking about that a while back.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council, that I can answer tonight?
Great job.
Thank you. Now, Nick Gow is going to talk in a little bit. I would appreciate if you guys gave him lots of questions that there's no answers to, okay, everybody? Please.
I think we have one more question over here.
The, the dome, is white the only color the canvas can come in?
Well, you don't want to ruin the surprises, do you?
No, I don't, if you got.
No, there, there are many color schemes that can happen, yes, and council gets to choose what that will be if they would like. Yep. Be careful what you ask for. I'm not even going to bring that up. You bring that up later tonight. I'm not even going there. You're almost, you're almost getting me. No, you just go right ahead.
Sit down where you're.
Thank you very much. Is that it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, and next is item D, and we have Nancy here, an overview of impacts to the city related to HF 718, which is the property tax reform bill adopted by Iowa Legislature. Welcome, Nancy.
Yes, it's good to be here tonight. This property tax reform was one of the last things the state legislature did before they adjourned for the year. And tonight, we're going to give a, I guess our, it's an informational presentation, just an overview of some of the main parts of the legislation affecting us as a city. It also affects the, the counties and other governmental agencies. And we expect, and it's been less than a week, and so we have some general information. We expect to have some more information as agencies provide it to us. There are, I've tried on each of the slides to just kind of give a comment on potential impacts to the city of Musketeen, but we really won't know those impacts until we get our first valuations. So this is just an overview, some thoughts, and specific questions we probably can't answer, but general questions, we, we have a good kind of feel for what the legislation includes. Okay, did too many. One of the main features is the legislation includes creating a new general maximum levy for each governmental agency by combining some of the current levies that are available for governments to use. And the first point there is it takes whatever you are currently levying for the $8.10 general fund tax levy. They say it's, what you're currently levying, there are some suburbs especially that may have less than the 810. But we, we have, we've been at the 810 for quite a few years. And then it adds whatever you are currently levying in a number of other voted in, mainly voted in levies, and there are 15 total of those. The only one we're using is the emergency tax levy, the 27 cents. So when you add those two together for us, that's $8.37 is the new maximum general fund levy. There is quite a few levies that were not impacted by the legislation, and that includes the transit tax levy, that's, that's not limited, the tort liability risk management insurance levy, debt service levy, employee benefits levy, and that includes all the I Bruce contributions, police and fire pension, health insurance, life insurance, dental insurance, and then we have a small amount of ag land. So it's, this legislation really focuses on the general fund, what we use to fund the main ongoing services to the, to the residents. So then the, with that maximum tax levy, there are very, there are several triggers that will impact whether we can maintain that, that full amount of the $8.37. And it's based on the growth, the, the growth in taxable valuations. If your growth is 6% or more, that growth rate is reduced by 3%, and then the levy is recalculated. So it's, it's kind of, the logic is a little backwards from what I think of it, but it would reduce that 837 downward, so we wouldn't get the full benefit of all the growth. And then if the growth is between 3 and 6%, that growth rate is reduced by 2%, and the levy rate is recalculated. If the taxable valuation growth is less than 3%, there's no recalculation that would, would need to be made. And then this legislation, the recalculation part is only set for the next three fiscal years FY before '25, '26, '27, and '28, so four years that this is set. So in effect, tax rates revenue will be reduced to limit the amount of tax revenue from growth that the city experiences. But in looking back on the history for the last 10 years, there are seven years that we had taxable valuation growth of less than 3%. Two years with growth between 3 Two years with growth between 3% and 5%, or 3% and 6%, and one year that we had growth over the 6%. And that was actually for the upcoming FY '24 year, which was 8.36%. But that 8.36 is the highest we've had in quite a few years. So it's a combination of... So actually, we won't know until we get valuations if this is going to have an impact on the city. Another part of the legislation includes a new 65-year and over exemption that's not income restricted, and that's in addition to the regular home state credit. And they provided some numbers there. Just without digging into this, we're just not sure what impact that's going to have on the city. And then they're also changing the military service property tax exemption and credit. And again, without... I think the state and even county assessors would still be looking into this. It's, we don't know what kind of impact that would have on us. And it's not readily determined or even estimated at this point. Another provision is that each of the taxing entities, cities, counties, and school districts, there'd be a new public hearing required for, and based on information that's required to be mailed to each taxpayer. And we'll have to, and I assume that they will come up with a format and form for us to use for that. And with that new hearing, the new budget deadline would be the end of April, like it was this year when it was extended before it was the end of March. So for sure, the city of Muscatine is going to have increased mailing cost to send out those notices. There's also some provisions for bond elections and other financing. And we haven't put any bonding proposals to the voters. I'm not even sure if I can remember ever doing that. But this legislation makes it so it can only be done once a year at the November general election time period. Debt thresholds, and this is actually, it may benefit the city of Muscatine a little bit. It increases the threshold by 30% so we can do more expensive projects without going to a vote by the residents. And the city currently uses, and it's called the reverse referendum process for general corporate purpose bonded projects. The state code allows us to issue up to $700,000 per project using that process, and that actually entails us publishing a notice of our intent to use bonds for certain projects. And then if voters file a petition, it can call for a special election. But what this legislation does is it increases that $700,000 by 30%. So it will go up to $910,000. We can do using that. And there's a, there are certain projects that are essential corporate purposes, streets, sewers, existing parks, that they're considered essential and not subject to this. But, and even airports are essential. But these other ones, it includes our deferred maintenance projects on our building, public buildings. It includes demolitions and that type of thing. So it, we've used this reverse referendum process quite a bit in funding our projects. So that was a one positive note in the legislation. There are a number of other things in this bill. I've tried to keep this, so it's just the effect on the budget process. There are some provisions for the tax abatement areas that might exclude some of the, that might change what's excluded as the incentive for tax abatements. It doesn't appear that there's any changes for tax increment projects. And so again, we're, that's an overview. As we were going through, as they were going through their process, both Carol and I were reviewing some of the preliminary bills, and some of those would have had a bigger impact to the city of Muscatine. But it seemed like as we were doing that, they would change them by the time we were done reviewing them. So it was like...
Yes, that's true.
Just tell me what you've actually done. So we will provide more information as it's available. And again, there's no council action or direction needed at this point. This is just informational. But if you've got some basic questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Nancy?
I guess we appreciate you staying on top of this and giving us this update right now because it was a little concerning coming out of the session as to what was going to happen. This is amazing what you've done so far.
Definitely. It was concerning.
Yep.
Thank you, Nancy. And next, we have some conversations regarding RagBri. So welcome, Nick Gouw and Rebecca Paulson.
Well, now that Nancy put everybody to sleep, we can wake everybody up with a couple of exciting things coming up. So thank you for that, Nancy.
I'll follow this too. We have colorful slides.
That's right. All right, good evening, Mayor, Council. Nick Gouw representing the Muscatine RagBri Committee. And with me also is Rebecca Paulson with GMCCI, also a co-chair for RagBri. I believe last Thursday, council approved the event to take place in the use of public property for RagBri. We're excited to be a meeting city. And we'll talk a little bit about what the meeting city means for the 50th anniversary of RagBri this year. Muscatine has a great cycling program here in Muscatine. We've got an awesome family, the Harper family, that's been involved with cycling in Muscatine for a number of years. We got, at the end of this month, coming up, the Melon City Criterion, which has been held for over 40 years out at our wonderful Weed Park. So again, a lot of tradition when it comes to cycling in Muscatine, and to be able to be a meeting city for the final day of the 50th anniversary of RagBri is awesome. All right, so what is RagBri all about? It's all about people enjoying the great state of Iowa. It is about helping introduce people from all over country, all over the country to what the great state of Iowa has to offer. Being able to go out and showcase the great towns in Iowa to help to showcase some of the great traditions that we have throughout the state of Iowa. So again, opportunity to go out there. I think Rebecca is going to talk a little bit about some of the numbers we've got coming up, but some amazing people coming from amazing states, different countries, and again, a great way to showcase our great state. So what does it take to put on RagBri? And we're going to talk specifically Muscatine. So throughout the state of Iowa, though, RagBri says for, let's say we had 20,000 riders for RagBri, it will take double that number of volunteers to help support throughout the entire state. So we're talking over 40,000 volunteers throughout the state of Iowa to help to put on the great event over a seven-day period. We've already gathered several volunteers throughout Muscatine. We had a, our first meeting had approximately 30 to 40 volunteers that have already stepped up to join different committees out there and to get the process underway. Anybody who is interested in signing up for RagBri can go to www.muscatin.com/ragbri, which is the GMCCI page, and you'll find a long list of opportunities out there for volunteering for RagBri. We've already had several city staff members who have committed. Our great Cinda has joined the entertainment pod that we'll talk a little bit about. So again, some great opportunities out there to help showcase Muscatine and what we have to offer here. So again, we do have five identified co-chairs. Our great Mayor Bark. We've got a couple of our individuals from Keep Muscatine Beautiful and Chris Boer and Brenda Christensen, and then also Rebecca Paulson and myself as co-chairs. Pod number one, I get a lot of questions about what is a pod and what are these things all about? So pod number one is our marketing pod, and is a committee put together involving getting the message out there about what we have to offer and what Muscatine is going to be able to provide. Dana Ferrera with GMCCI is leading up that pod. Pod number two is our finance and risk management pod, and that is being headed by Bill Harper. Pod number three is logistics and safety pod. What better person than our great chief, Tony Keys, to get out there and lead that? And I know that Brian Steiman is also involved with, helping with the logistics and the route as well. So he, yeah, it's Brian, it's Public Works. You know, they don't really matter too much, but we just make sure our roads are safe. And then finally, pod number four, the fun pod. That is the entertainment pod. And you know, again, we're grateful to partner with Keep Muscatine Beautiful. Keep in mind that this event in Muscatine is going to take place on Saturday. Keep Muscatine Beautiful is going to have activities going on Thursday night, Friday night, and all day Saturday. And oh, that's right, come Sunday, we've also got the American Queen Voyage coming in. We've also got College Search Kickoff taking place that same weekend. So there's a lot, a lot of good things happening in Muscatine, and we look forward to RagBri being one of those. And with that, I will turn it over to Rebecca.
All right, so town benefits. We're expecting 20,000 to 30,000 people coming into Muscatine. That's a huge number if you think about our population's 23,000. We're looking at doubling or more than doubling our population for a day. That's a really crazy number to think about. For those of you that like statistics, and I know some of you on this council do, just to let you know, 37% of this group of people are not going to be from Iowa. This is according to RagBri. For those of you that don't like to do mental math, I'm one of those people, that means that 63% of those people are not from Iowa, which is if we have 25,000 riders come in, taking the average between maybe 20 to 30, that's 1,000, or I'm sorry, 15,750 people will be coming through Muscatine that are not from Iowa. So we really are going to be introducing a lot of people to our great community and our state, which is something we need to take very seriously. 58% of the people that are going to be coming through are considered professionals, doctors, lawyers, teachers, et cetera. The average age of a RagBri rider is the very young age of 45. 66% of riders are male, and 34% of the people are first-time riders. So again, if you don't like mental math, that's 8,500 people that will be coming through this town will be first-time RagBri riders. Again, all the more reason to highlight our community, show these people how great Iowa is, and welcome them to RagBri, and hopefully, they will keep doing that again. So the town benefits, obviously, you know, from the exposure, we're also going to see a bump in economic interest here because people will be stopping for gas. They'll be eating, you know, not just the riders. There's a lot of support people. They'll be coming through, stopping here. And so we're looking to accommodate them as well. It's not just all about the riders, but also taking into consideration the support people. How do we help them also have a good experience and help them enjoy Muscatine? And then repeat visitors. One thing that you'll hear the state of Iowa say is that tourism is a gateway to economic development. The state has done research. It's a well-known fact that people coming into an area as a visitor, having a good experience, will make them more likely to consider moving here in the future. This is part of why the state and the Iowa Economic Development Authority, or IEDA, is putting so much money into tourism grants and tourism funding. And they're going to continue on doing that because they know getting people to Iowa is really important for the long-term health of the state. Again, the economic impact here, restaurants, gas, grocery shopping, not just for the riders. The riders are going to come through. We're going to have lots of activities for them on the riverfront, vendors, things for them to buy. We want to help them get refreshed. We're going to offer them watermelon slices and, you know, have live music and a really fun time. But then all of those support people that are coming in, again, they'll be utilizing some of the other things in town like gas and shopping. If you're not familiar, here's the route. They'll be going from Correville to Davenport. So they'll be, the majority of the people will be arriving in Muscatine. We're expecting around 10:00, 10:30. And so you have the people that wake up early and will trickle through, but the majority of those people are going to be in Muscatine in that timeframe. So we're considered more of a, probably a lunch stop than a breakfast stop, according to RagBri. So again, that's really great for us that people will be coming. They'll be hungry. We'll have lots of great food available for them, water refreshments, and of course, watermelon. And I believe we're going to have someone from the Muscatine Police Department come up and talk real quickly about the route and the usage of the streets.
So as they come into Muscatine, they're going to be coming in off of G-28. And this is the same route that they used back in 2016. And why this route? Because we have an underpass there, and so they're not having to cross a four-lane highway to get into Muscatine. Worked out very well in 2016. Yes, there might be some congestion with CSK going on, but we had the exact same event going on back in 2016 on the exact same weekend. Everything worked out great. The soccer teams will be kind of given an alternate route to come in off of Mittman Road or off of Grandview Avenue and follow Hauser up to try to avoid some of the conflicts and some of the issues there. So as they come down G-28, they're then going to hit, obviously, Hershey Avenue. From Hershey Avenue, they'll work their way down to Mississippi Drive. One thing I love about this route here is, as you'll see on the next map, we're going to have a lot of activities planned on the Muscatine Riverfront. And they're going to be taking Mississippi Drive, a brand-new street for us here in Muscatine, being able to see all the activities taking place on the riverfront. And we've kind of strategically laid out the riverfront for that to take place. From there, they'll enter into the riverfront. They'll exit out of the riverfront. They will then take Mulberry Avenue around the roundabout down to Fifth Street. Fifth Street all the way out to Park Avenue. Park Avenue all the way out to Washington Street. And then finally, Washington out 22 all the way towards Buffalo, which will be their next stop. So that is the route that was decided upon by the entire committee as being the safest route out there. There was some talk at one point about potentially taking them up Second Street to Park Avenue. One of the areas of concern there was the bridge, though, and trying to get traffic on and off of the bridge with potentially 20,000 to 30,000 riders going up there. So as the committee came together, as we talked with Public Works and with Public Safety, we decided that Fifth Street up to Park Avenue out to Washington would be the safest route for bikers up there. Officer, anything you want to add?
No, that's...
Okay. All right, with that, let's talk about the next map, which is the Muscatine Riverfront. So as we talked about, our goal with this entire layout of the riverfront is to get exposure with the riders coming in off Mississippi Drive. So once they hit Iowa Avenue, we're going to detour them into the Muscatine Riverfront. So one of the other concepts of our logo or as our theme of Muscatine was double dip in the Mississippi. One of the very first times, if not the very first time, that they're going to have the opportunity to have two Mississippi River stops. So this will be their first opportunity to dip their tire, which is a tradition with RagBri, in the Mississippi River. Our goal is to have them come in straight off of Iowa Avenue, be able to dip in the old boat launch area. And then you see some green tractors up there. Those green tractors actually represent where the bikers will be stationed at. We'll have cables running between the John Deere tractors out there for the bikers to be able to place their bikes. We'll have a hydration station located in front of Pearl City Station. We'll have a hydration station located in front of Pearl City Station. We'll also be selling water and pop at Pearl City Station, so a good opportunity for the bikers coming in, especially between 10:30 and 12:30 when things are starting to get hot, to get rehydrated. We're working with Kent Corporation right now on potentially providing some squinters, I believe they're called, which are hydration packets for, again, for the bikers to get hydrated. One of the big things that we've been told by several RagBri riders that live in Muscatine is one of the hot topics and the hot food sale items are pies and ice cream when it comes to each and every location. Well, to have ice cream, we kind of need a cool spot, especially in the middle of the afternoon, also with pies as well. So we're looking at utilizing Pearl City Station for our pie and ice cream sales out there. Not that it's air-conditioned, but at least we can get some fans in there and help keep it cool. That'll also be our volunteer registration area there as well, so that we can get volunteers in to encourage them to have a meeting location, assigned tasks from there, to help, again, volunteer throughout the entire riverfront and entire Muscatine community. As we work our way down then, there will be an ATM machine that'll be brought in. We've been told that a lot of bikers don't carry cash with them, a lot of them are cards. So we've been encouraged to have an ATM. We're looking at setting that up next to the restroom building on the riverfront. After that, porta-potties are going to be a hot topic. The riverfront restroom, I assume, will be open. I'm not going to answer to that any longer, but I assume that that will be open. So after that, again, we want to make sure we've got some porta-potties. One of the great features that Muscatine is going to have, and we're going to hear a little bit more about, is called watermelons, aren't we, Mayor Bark? And so we are looking at offering free watermelon slices to all of the bikers. And we're looking at utilizing the small parking lot between the riverfront restroom and the basketball courts to hand out our slices. With that, we want to make sure we're taking care of our Parks and Rec employees. So we're also looking at putting a couple dumpsters over in this area there for people to throw their rind straight into a dumpster rather than a trash can that has to be dumped. So we've been trying to strategically plan where we're going to locate things as we move down. Now, the next item, I'm going to kind of strike from the discussion for now. And you see where there's a watermelon slice located on the basketball courts. I think that might be a topic of conversation for a few minutes from now. So I'll go ahead and leave that one alone. Then we move down further south. And is everybody familiar with Keep Muscatine Beautiful and the Almost Friday Fest activities that take place? So pretty much the exact same setup as what American, or Almost Friday Fest does, stage on the far-up riverside, followed by the beer tent. Now you see the two yellow lines, that will be our staged area. We've worked with the Muscatine Police Department to make sure that we have a secure location there. We're also going to encourage most, the majority of the food truck vendors to set up down in that area there as well, so that people can enjoy their beverages, enjoy their foods down there. We're going to be setting up several picnic tables and tents in that area, too. So having shelter or shade has been a hot topic of conversation. And we've got Randleman and Sons, who's going to be providing all, every tent that they have that day, set up in that location down there, again, trying to encourage people to come down and enjoy the entertainment. There will be a DJ playing from, I believe it's 8:30 till 12:30 down on the riverfront, followed by a band shortly after that. Our goal is to be done with the activities down there, no later than 2:00, 2:30, to encourage bikers to move on to the final stop there. This is also going to be the area that we have the majority of our picnic tables, trash cans, and our porta-potties. Again, the bikers are going to be able to see this huge entertainment center as they come down Mississippi Drive, and our goal is to encourage them to visit this area, stay as long as they want to, but then have an exit strategy. And our exit strategy then is they pick back up their bikes at the bike station where the John Deere tractors are. Also, as bikes come in or as they leave, we will have a RagBri med tent set up just inside of Iowa Avenue. And there's also, next to that, are going to be two bike shops that are provided by RagBri set up in this area as well. For those that don't want to take the trip down to the entertainment center where Almost Friday Fest is, we will be having another band that we just booked, going to be set up in the small parking lot by River View Center. Again, for those that want to go and enjoy a lighter entertainment before jumping back on their bikes for a short period of time. Also have a couple food trucks down in this area there. And then to end things, our goal is to have a hydration station at Cedar Street. So again, ultimate goal, let's get everybody to come into the riverfront off of Iowa Avenue. Let's have everybody exit the riverfront through Cedar Street, jump onto Mississippi Drive, and hopefully we can have a continuous flow of activities taking place throughout the entire activities on the riverfront. So I think it's been a great setup. We've had a lot of feedback from, again, local participants who have been involved with RagBri for a number of years, and they've added a lot of great elements into this to try to help make sure that things keep moving and flow is a positive from the start to the finish of Muscatine. With that, I will turn it back over to finally display our theme or our logo for Muscatine.
So there was a lot of input, and I believe some of the people in this room may have been part of that input into what we should have the RagBri theme be. And then it was decided on, and I am pleased to show you guys the RagBri logo. Muscatine, one and a melon. As you guys all know, we are known for our watermelons at the Chamber. We get calls about watermelons in the summer nonstop, which was something I did not expect when I started working at the Chamber. So much so that last year, when I was working at the Chamber, I had a lady call me from Ames and said, I, there used to be a place in Ames that sold musk melons. I can't get one, where can I get one? And I was taking my college student to Iowa State and said, actually, I'm going to be in Ames this weekend. I'd be happy to bring you a melon. So Pamela Brown, I met her at the CVS in Ames with a musk melon that I told her, you call Marriott's and have them pick out a musk melon for you. I drove down there, Pamela Brown was very nice. She paid me for the melon and gave me a jar of peach jam. So it was great. My husband thought I was crazy, but I'm like, it's Pamela Brown. She's like 80 years old, she can't hurt me, it's fine. He thought I was a little nuts, which might not be untrue. So this is a great thing that our Dina Ferrera from our office made. As you'll see, it's a great nod to RagBri without being overly flashy. This is really geared towards people in our community. They're going to want to support RagBri, show people, you know, how much we support this and welcome them to our community. You'll see the gold bicycle representing that. And then strategically, the L is gold because the RagBri logo is gold. It's their 50th anniversary, which is represented by an L, the Roman numeral for 50. So that is why that's there. And so we'll have this on t-shirts and stickers and all kinds of fun things. So you guys were the first to know.
Did the vendors or did the farmers know that we're giving watermelon away? Are they prepared for this? Are they aware of it? Because I know there was one year that the wrong repellent was given to the watermelon.
We had, they, the folks from the team have been in contact. I said, please let them know ahead of time so they can plan accordingly and make sure that they have enough melons. And so, yeah, that is a conversation that we've had. And I will say, just on a side note, this is a phenomenal committee. It has been a great, great team effort. City, Chamber, organizations all across this town. We've got people from companies on this committee. I mean, there's just people, like, with the main planning committee is about 30 to 40 people that are meeting regularly. I'm one of the co-chairs, I sit on two of the pods, two of the four. And so there's lots of meetings, lots of collaboration happening, and it's been really fun.
I wanted to point out that, if this was said already, I apologize, but Cindy came up with the name Muscatine, one and a melon, so thank you, Cindy.
Any questions?
Oh, good job.
I like it. Well, we must have done a good job if you have no questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Told you it was going to be a lot more exciting than Nancy Leake.
Poor Nancy.
We're going to move on to item F, which is the proposed Riverfront Watermelon Slice Public Art Installation and a discussion on the installation of the world's largest watermelon slice at Riverside Park. Honorable Mayor gets to go.
I have never been up here, so I am-
Never been up here.
He's a doctor, doctors don't do computers that well, yeah.
All right. All right. Perfect. Counsel, thank you for having me. My name's Brad, and so basically what I'm doing today is presenting a potential project to be on the riverfront and the, basically, the world's largest watermelon. So we're just going to get right into it. So the direction sought tonight is only going to be two directions. Number three is no longer needed. Number one, would the city council consider pursuing the addition of the world's largest watermelon slice to the riverfront? Funding has been obtained for the watermelon slice, and also as of today for the foundation, which is great. And then number two, what location do you desire? And we're going to be getting input from, we got input from Parks and Rec, we'd like input from you, and then also on Tuesday from Public Art Commission as well.
So this all started after a business visit from the Chamber. So I went to a business, a corporation, and talked to them a little bit. And they mentioned it'd be really nice to have an attraction. You know, the Sports Dome, the Activity Dome is an amenity, not an attraction. So they were like, it'd be kind of cool to have something on the riverfront specifically, an attraction that people can come from all over to view. I was kind of thinking a water park would be kind of cool, but that'd be really expensive. So basically, you know, on the riverfront, we have the best riverfront, I think, all the way up and down the Mississippi River. So the riverfront, we have the String of Pearls right there to your left, which is amazing. And then also Muscatine River Clamor, that's an icon right there. And then, of course, our wonderful Norbert F. Becky Bridge. So looking at that, I started to do a little bit of research. And 11 o'clock at night, I was just typing up, I'm like, okay, well, we're also known for melons here in Muscatine as well. So I started typing up a world's largest watermelon slice, because why wouldn't you do that at 11 o'clock at night? And so I found some options. Green River, Utah, which is in the United States, is the largest one I could find. And we had a team also look at it. Victoria, Australia. We have one here in Muscatine down on the south end. But then the one at the bottom right, which was the picture that you saw in the title, was in Chinchilla, Australia. And that one right there is 29 and 1/2 feet long and 9 feet tall. I was like, all right, well, that's pretty cool. So I, and I like the design of it, too. So I ended up talking to a local fabricating company, Hoffman, who actually made the Marriott's watermelon up there. And they said that the sheets of metal can come in 40-foot and 80-foot sheets. So I figured, oh, we'll start with 40 feet, because it'd be a pretty expensive one, larger than that. And, well, started brainstorming on what could this look like? So this is, this is an item that Jordan Lloyd actually came up with. That's cardboard, really high-tech prototype right there. And just trying to brainstorm on what could this look like? Started talking to Hoffman, Hoffman Fabrication, and they came up with prototypes. That's the one to the left, or concept to the left and to the right. And the one that we are looking at, the concept is 40 feet long by 16 feet tall. And it's 16,000 pounds, which is a quarter of an inch steel, which is a really large watermelon. And the bottom part, and I apologize, but on the left side, there's like, there's a circle at the bottom of the rind, and that's an eight-foot diameter that will have a one-inch steel base. So it's a pretty substantial piece of metal that would be iconic for our community. I've been talking to a local artist, and the total cost of this, not the foundation component, but the actual watermelon itself with the artist, $40,000. That has been raised, and we're ready to go for that as well. The foundation component as well was donated. And we're, I'll talk about some of the local partners as well, that's kind of making this potentially going to happen, again, a potential project, you guys. So one of the questions are location, 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 location. So if you look at, and again, I apologize, it's a smaller footprint, but the far right, the top right, is basically right next to the river center by the marina. And then the one just to the left of that would be just to the side of the Pearl City Station. The bottom right one would be where it's Millennial Plaza. And then on top of that, the one just to the left of that would be on the, basically, right in front of Mulberry Avenue. So it was mentioned by one of the council members that how cool would it be to come down that road and all of a sudden you see this 40-foot watermelon just stand, you know, standing right there? And I actually never thought about that, so I thought that was pretty cool, too. Another option, too, and the reason why it's blown up is because it automatically dusted on the PowerPoint, so I apologize. But Andrew Fangman came up with these maps as well. But this one's just to the side of Millennial Plaza. So the way this works is that side where that purple or that pink rectangle is, is not part, it's not part of the levee system. And Andrew, do you want to talk about this? Yeah, why don't you talk about this? Yeah, thank you. And he'll explain why.
Mayor, Council, I'm looking at a number of factors here, kind of the blue dotted area. That's the regulatory flood plain, which generally you want to avoid. The two bright green lines, those are two 24-inch sewer mains, so want to stay off the top of that. And so it kind of works out that that's an ideal location that you could put something like this without a lot of hassle. If you, if you put it up on the levee, which would be kind of by where the floodgate is, any structure placed on the levee, you have to go through Army Corps of Engineer permitting.
Thank you for your expertise. So these are the locations. The group basically mentioned it'd be nice to actually have it down on the riverfront somewhere, which, you know, with our American Queen Voyage boats coming, with RagBri coming, with people walking up and down our 15 miles of trails. If you're driving on Mississippi Drive, you're going to see this. You cannot not look at it, right, which is really nice. So some additional information, so again, a local artist met with, there was a consent to proceed as of May 3rd with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. The Public Art Advisor Commission is this coming Tuesday at noon, so I'll be meeting with them. I have, and that'll be, that'll be great, kind of a final blessing, if you will, if they so choose as well. It's been a collaborative effort with the fundraising. It actually went really quick, I thought, which was really nice. Part of all this, we have, I mean, part of the fundraising, we have about five different donors and a sixth one actually as of today, which is great. The Musco Lighting, this was kind of a cool thing. So I talked to Brett Nelson, who was the business I met with, and he's like, I think there needs to be some kind of an attraction. So I was like, congratulations, I think hopefully you get this attraction happening. He's like, oh, so it's kind of my idea, too. I'm like, yeah, absolutely. But he mentioned that there's a possibility that they are going to donate Musco Lighting. So this will be lit up at nighttime to, you know, shine on the riverfront, which I think is wonderful. But the caveat with that is you need electricity to go there. So talked to MPW. MPW said that they will work with the project to accomplish that as well. So another great team effort. If this were to happen, this project, it'd have to be delivered, and there'd have to be a crane to lift 16,000 pounds of metal. And the crane service, Bob's Crane Service, said that they'll donate their time as well to lift this up and put it on its final resting place, wherever everybody decides that would be as well. So, and again, Hoffman Fabrication, they've been amazing, so they're going to be the ones making this. The artists will be actually going into their facility, controlled environment, and painting this. 1,300 square feet of paint that has to be put on, you know, not each side, but total. And then on top of that, too, they're also going to be, they have a structural engineer, and we have a meeting tomorrow here at the city, just again, ideas, just talking about it. But yeah, they also donated the foundation component, time, material. Han Ready Mix is also part of it. So it's, and then Jason Schillig, who also works with Muscos, would dig the foundation out. So again, just a huge collaborative teamwork for the community. The other important thing, too, I'd like to also point out- The other important thing too, I'd like to, uh, um, also point out is with the, uh, public, I forgot my glasses, the Public Art Advisory Commission, um, there was a, there was an idea, and I love this idea of tying in the history, why Muscatine watermelons? And I think that'd be really great, uh, to, to work with them on how we can accomplish that too, with a plaque and having potentially some, some pictures, um, on it as well. Um, whatever pictures that they're thinking, I think it'd be great to, uh, work with them to, to put that on the plaque as well. So, the next one is direction. So again, um, would council like to, um, like, would the council like to pursue this project? Um, to, to add to the riverfront, the world's largest watermelon slice?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you can do it for...
I guess I need a consensus, yeses.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And then you want to go to the second one? Okay, the last one is what location do you desire of those locations suggested?
I have a, I have a couple of questions for you. One, because it is so big, is it going to block any of the river? Because we, I know you and I kind of talked about that. It's like you get something so big down there, it's like, is it going to, you know, if you got, you know, residents, is it going to block their view of the river from where their houses? I want to make sure that we don't do that, because then you'll have other issues. Um, the other thing is that I love the idea of having it on the riverfront. I would suggest instead of it being square, maybe tilted, so you kind of have that angle, so people can see it as they're coming up the river.
Like a 45-degree angle?
Yeah.
It's a fantastic idea.
And it's like, I just, uh, when I think of the boats coming up and people coming down River Drive, seeing that big, huge, um, watermelon sitting there would be great. And as far as having the world's largest watermelon, who do we need to contact? So we can get all of us Muscatine communities down there so they can take a picture and we can be, take over that title from Australia.
We, and we, uh, uh, Jordan Lloyd, um, has been doing some research on that, which is pretty cool.
Okay.
So to answer your first question, um, the first question was location and will it block anything? Um, that's a great question. So that, the spot, the, the far left one, the larger picture, the answer is, uh, no, there's a bluff right there. It's, it is only 16 feet up. I don't say it only 16 feet up, but it is 16 feet up, uh, relative to the bluff as well.
Mm-huh.
Um, and, um, the reason why it's perpendicular, uh, to the river is because it's going to be only eight feet wide. So it's, it's going to be a really kind of skinny slice, if you will. Um, now the other, the other locations as well, um, the, I, I tend to want to potentially stay away from the Pearl City Station, only because, uh, you know, you have the, um, some businesses right across there, the Community Foundation, and I, I wouldn't want to block any of their view because they have a beautiful building, and I, that'd be probably one way I'd like to steer clear from. Um, but, you know, as far as, uh, blocking anything, the Mulberry, Mulberry would be potentially another one with that, those apartments just to the right. It would be a beautiful, uh, drive down there and you see, you know, the watermelon. But I think those would be the only areas to, to think about again. Um, those four pictures specifically, or at least the, the, the three of them over there, um, I have, we have not looked at the map specifically regarding where the force mains are, um, as well, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counsel Brock?
Brockert?
No.
That's all right. Um, great idea. I, I tend to have a preference, and this is logistically, uh, anything down on the left, down, down river, uh, the big image and by the Pearl City Station, which has so much traffic and activity, um, you'll get a lot of conflict. I tend to like the Mulberry location or the River View. Because if you think about some people that might want to come and visit and take a selfie or anything like that, it's not as long a walk. I mean, we want to encourage walkers and stuff, but, and I think when I saw the Mulberry, it was like, "What a great greeting when you're coming around that roundabout."
Yeah.
And also, um, it stretches out the activity on the riverfront. So I sort of leaning towards liking that because of the visual. And people can pull up to it and get out and take a selfie a lot easier than having to go all the way down.
Another benefit with that too is if you were to take a selfie next to this watermelon slice, you could get the bridge in the background also. So there's, there is benefits to that for a photo op. Um, I do want to add too, um, the, the paint, there's, I don't know how many gallons of paint. We just saw the quote today, but the paint would also include having a lacquer on it. So it's going to be, it's going to have a, um, a coat on it initially, and then the artist will paint it, and then the lacquer will go on it, so, uh, it can hold up to, to sun and other types of activities, yeah.
That's just my recommendation.
Yep, no, I appreciate that, Jeff.
I like the Mulberry location. I like the idea of coming around the roundabout, you're driving along, you're going to just see it right there. I also agree with Peggy, I mean, it's a great place to drive up, park, you know, you can take a good selfie with it. There's not a lot at that end already, and so it'd be nice to have an attraction at that end. Um, also, I'd like to just recognize this as an opportunity to, um, I mean, why, why are we the mo-, why are we so well-known for my watermelons? It was, it's, this is an opportunity to, uh, pay tribute to our immigrant population. But, I mean, three, four generations ago, you know, there was folks that were, came up from Texas to pick these watermelons. Um, I'm assuming there's going to be some kind of plaque or a description of why is this thing here? And, and I think weaved into that, if we could have a local historian write something about the, the history around that and, uh, generations of Hispanics and others that we've had come to our community. Um, they're a big part of our community, and I think, and we, and we don't talk about it enough. Um, you know, we got the pearl, we talk about a lot of our history, but that's a segment of our history, and it often gets kind of overlooked, and this is a great opportunity to pay tribute, you know, to that.
Andrew, I have a question for you, sorry to put you on the spot. If, if it were to potentially be on the Mulberry area, do you recall what would be potential underground there? Since we're talking, I mean, and I guess this is just a, an idea coming forth, so we could always look into that, but...
I think if couns- if council has some preferred locations, we, we'll go through a site plan review process, and we can get more information about like what's feasible.
Yeah.
So go, I mean, go ahead and, you know, give feedback on the sites, but the, some of those may be ruled out depending on site conditions, yeah.
Well, and the one thing I worry about with the Mulberry site, just on the other side, is we're already going to have that artwork sitting there on that roundabout.
Mm-huh.
And is that, you know, it's like, do we need to spread it out a little bit?
Well, but then we're going to have the amphitheater at the other end.
Oh, that's true.
Which is going to be, to me, public art too.
That's true, I didn't even think about that.
So when you stretch it out, so...
Well, I'm, I'm in favor for the, uh, the Mulberry one too, especially, because she stole my thunder too. I was going to talk about sitting at an angle too, but that's okay, Angie beat me to it. But it's, it's, it's a good spot, because when you come around there, you can catch it from both ends, both ways.
Mm-huh.
And, um, I, the amphitheater is eventually going to be down there too, so I think that would distract from it. So, that's just my opinion.
So, and, uh, one last thing I just want to throw out there. So the way that the, the prototype is right there, if you, if you, no, actually...
Don't break it.
No.
It's going to be worth bazillions.
Yeah, big bucks. Cardboard.
So, um, again, the idea is to have it just like this, right? But, um, it has been brought up by a group of people that if, if, you know, if it was 45-degree angle, so like this, but then if it's kind of cockeyed up like this as well, um, you know, and I think that'd be for, um, you know, whatever you guys are thinking, and then also the, the Public Art Advisory Commission as well. But just again, an idea.
And maybe you could put Muscatine in the rind instead of up on the red. Mm-huh, and make, put seeds on that too, on the other side.
Oh, yeah.
On both sides.
You bet.
Upsides, yeah.
To that point, have the artist look and see the, how to frame it with the bridge. Because if the bridge is here and that's straight on, you're going to have to stand down here to get both in successfully. If you turn it a little, you might have a better image, and that's going to be like selfie station. Uh, just like the clamor is, you know. But have the artist look at that perspective to see what, what would work best.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And again, uh, number three, no longer, there is zero cost, um, to the city, zero cost. It's all funded, um, and raised and ready to go, lock and loaded.
I guess we can move on.
Okay.
There's no discussion on this tonight. This is for information purposes.
There will be, it...
Yeah.
There'll be future times, yeah, where the public can comment, yep.
All right. Councilmember Lewis, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Yes, there is, Mayor. I just want to, uh, send a, I hope all the nurses this week had a wonderful Nurses Week, um, as we celebrate, uh, our profession. It's like, I know sometimes we hear a lot about EMS and law enforcement, which is great. Um, we're, but nurses are a piece of the whole pie too, so I hope everyone had a great Nurses Week. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hopkins.
I have nothing, sir.
Councilmember Gordon.
Nothing more, thank you.
Councilmember Freilich.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brockert.
Nothing, me tonight either.
Councilmember Osborne.
Lots going on. Uh, I'll keep it to two release special events. We've got the Sippin' Shop Friday night. Are, are tickets still available for that?
I think so.
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you. And also, there's really kind of a neat thing on Mother's Day, uh, something unique at Port Louis National Wildlife, uh, area. You can jump in a kayak and listen to birds and all kinds of things with a bunch of other moms and kids and everything else, so... Also, there's, uh, you have to register for that as well, make sure we got enough kayaks and light vests and all that fun stuff. Well, you got a great idea, Mayor, with a, thanks for bringing that up.
You're welcome. Cinda? City Minister Webb? Um, I just have to say, I had a wonderful meeting today about 4 o'clock with, uh, with a nice-sized group, um, different nationalities, uh, and living here in Muscatine, you know. And, um, just hearing that there's 2,500 Liberians that live in Muscatine, really, really cool. And, uh, you know, and we talked about, how can we, how can we, uh, you know, network together? Get them, you know, get everybody plugged in together? So that's just a, kind of a cool item that hopefully, uh, we'll continue to have some conversations with as well. But, yeah, it was wonderful. And that is all, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.